Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. The meeting of the Whitesboro City Council this night, day of September 2025. Susan, will you please call the row?
Mary Abrams.
Here.
Nowus Dukic.
Here.
Wendy Little.
Here.
Shayla Shore.
Here.
Margaret Heavens.
Here.
And Tessa Paul.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum present. Councilwoman Abrams, will you please lead us in prayer?
Our heavenly Father, we come to you once again to just ask that your presence be here tonight, watch over this meeting, whatever we do be pleasing to you. We continue praying for the mayor as she conducts her office, Father, and the council members. And we ask now again, do you just watch over us to give you the prayers for every time? You know what I mean?
Okay, we have a very special guest with us tonight, Ms. Ada Marie Miller, and today is her eighth birthday.
Oh.
And she is gonna do us the honor, along with two of her friends, Ms. Rosie Cook and Ms. Tracy Wisna, and they're gonna lead us in the pledge.
Oh.
So if you ladies would like to come up?
There we go.
You're here. You're here. You're up there. In front of the mic. You want to turn, here's the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever.
Ah, yeah.
I don't think that's happening. Everything is done with such intention. And volume, my love. Thank you all so much.
That is awesome. You did great.
Okay. That catch you right up, didn't it?
It did.
Didn't it?
That don't keep your head in the water.
Okay, council, you have a quorum of the previous minutes. Are there any questions or comments about those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the previous minute.
I'm like, uh, second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. You also have the financial statements. Are there questions or comments about those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the financial statement.
Make a motion.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Okay, at the last meeting, we had the second reading of the ordinance for our 2025 budget. After we did that, we needed a roll call vote. That was my error for not doing that. We were, I was moving kinda fast, and I apologize for that. So if, after we approved it, I'll need everyone to, uh, we'll do a roll call vote to approve the order.
Mary Abrams.
Yes.
Nowus Dukic.
Yes.
Tessa Paul.
Yes.
Wendy Little.
Yes.
Shayla Shore.
Yes.
And Margaret Heavens.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have ordinance 2025-12 for taxes due and payable for the year 2025, our first reading.
It's actually printed out there for me. See?
One more minute there, okay. Ordinance number 2025-12, assessment ordinance for taxes due and payable for the year 2024. Okay, this is 24 on there, sorry. It's okay. We'll make this one.
That was my 25th ticket, so boring.
Yeah, yeah. We'll change it. Payable for the year 2025. The City Council of the City of Whitesboro, Kentucky, do ordain as follows. That there be and there is hereby laid and levied for the taxable year of 2025 and which is due and payable on or before January 1st, 2026, an ad-humor tax of 34 cents upon each $100 worth of property subject to taxation, either real or personal, and the maximum permitted on bank shares per $100 worth of said shares subject to taxation within the corporate limits of the City of Whitesboro as set out in KRS 136.270 Subtext 3. Said levy is laid and levied and made and based upon the assessments made as of January 1st, 2025 for the taxes due and payable for the tax year 2025. The levy and taxes collected there from are to be used for the purpose of paying salaries for the city employees, current indebtedness incurred by the City of Whitesboro, and claims and accounts of whatever nature that are payable from the general expense fund. Any and all funds that are collected under this levy shall be deposited in the general fund of the city. Be it further ordained that any and all taxes under the above levy shall be due and payable on or before January 1st, 2026. Once taxes are passed due, a penalty of 1.5% per month will be added to all taxes until date of payment. Said ordinance is passed in compliance with approval of the city tax assessor, who has therefore appraised property in accordance with appraisals levy on city property, that it may correspond with past appraisals with city. The county tax assessor is hereby hired to be the city tax assessor. All other ordinance for ad-humor assessment is repealed. Given first reading on this night, day of September 2025. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Valerie.
Thank you, thanks to all for being here. I think I'm much more nervous than I did at the girl's party. I wish I might've did a good job too. But I appreciate the city, our crew, and the town, who live here at Fort, but love Whitesboro, and appreciate all that y'all do to make it just right. So with that said, there's a couple of projects that I wanted to report on and share, share thanks with for that. One is just a little bit of an update on the farmers market. It's been very slow, very, very challenging, certainly a new project for me. Abandoned mine land funding, goes a little slower. But I think that the plan now, because the bid, the plan was made three to four years ago, and prices have increased with that, they're not looking at a build as much as a prefab that would come in and be assembled. The design, I think, that still looks nice and would create a large pavilion in that space. Also, it would just allow us uncertainties about what the price, what the price of items would be and allow us to fit within the budget. And I'm welcome, welcome to bring, happy to bring that new plan over, share with you. But Chris Cole, my lead one, over, who's been involved with that, responsibility for knowing what is going on with that. So just a little update on that, that it's not off, off the radar, it's just moving slow. Ideally, we'd love to get, be able to put a bid out in the next, when we put bids out, they came back, one at 300,000 and two at 900,000, and it just wasn't a reasonable bid that could be accepted. And Craig helped us with that decision, like, he was not being accountable on our own. So little challenges there, but it's working. Second, we appreciate the support of the Division of Water, and that serving as the primary guarantee for those funds in the town and county, who work across the county with streams and waters. Hope you see some of that. Facebook is our main way of communicating, but some plans going in on stream banks for repairing zones and sand lakes and watershed areas that specifically are Whitesboro, Crax College, and sand lake. So trying to spread that out. So it's, it's small, but the practices, if they could be served as proof of concept, could be beneficial across, across the county. So appreciating you serving that role with us. Also, in regards to the farmers market, thank you for the leadership and the opportunities where you all serve as a physical sponsor, and the conversations and the, the plans to move towns, the farmers markets, financials to towns. I think that'll be a little bit of a less burden towards the City of Whitesboro, although it would, it would still serve everything that the City of Whitesboro and Farmers Market is gonna be down, down here. Just take a little bit of responsibility off of that there. In regard to the farmers market, we appreciate the funding and support in the past. It's grown over the years. Last year, there was a very nice funding support that came, $5,000 for a cost share for the farmers market, and then an additional $5,000 that went for the farmers market music and activities that happened with that. We, we think we got the music, ticket, the music covered, but as the season winds down, the cost share should, would still be beneficial and is needed for things like the market manager, double dollars, and just routine expenses, tents, tables, things that come with the farmers market. So would be asking for that, sir, for that investment, again, if possible. Now, again, with some good news, which I will call it good, it's just, just, some of it's just hard to bump, but we did approve, again, for a levy at Whitesboro Music Series for an additional three years, additional funding for that. So we have that opportunity coming forward. Mountain Heritage Festival, a committee, what you and the city have done to decorate there, looks really impressive at times, and makes that place sort of shine. So just wanted to let you know that that's happened, meaning all of you are welcome to be any part of it that you would like to be. So just some updates there. I'll entertain questions or will you sit down?
Uh, we, this time of year, after we pass our budget, we always donate our annual $5,000 to the market. And if the council would agree, I would entertain a motion that we donate our original $5,000. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you so very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you all for this, for the market.
Appreciate, and, and that, just as much as, as the funding, that, no, every place doesn't have that. So if you get that, you know, some of you can, we really appreciate.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, Tessa.
Next, Mountain Heritage Festival Committee.
Hi, I'm Nikki Lucas. I'm co-chair of the now of the Mountain Heritage Festival. And this is my second year. Hopefully, we pray for good weather this year, because last year was a cool road. And I first of all, wanna thank you all for all your support with our festival and how big we've made it and stuff now. And I, first of all, wanna make sure we have permission to use all the city facilities, as in water, garbage, all that stuff this year for our festival. And also, we are, I'm sure you've heard, our headliner this year is the Lovers Tour. It's a Taylor Swift experience. We are open to bringing it to people here with kids who cannot afford $1,000 tickets to see Taylor Swift in person. And it is about a two to three hour show. She has dancers, she does the full entire, whole concert experience that the same as the Eras Tour with Taylor Swift. What we are, what we would appreciate and love is some support, the sponsorship for our headliner this year. We are looking at, is about $15,000 to pay for them to come, which of course, a little bit would help with making it a great festival and stuff. So if you have any questions or anything, just ask. I said we pray for good weather and hope that we'll have a huge turnout this year for that. So, um, did I say everything? I almost forgot my forgets, but the man is a pro. So she recruited Megan, I'm not gonna give up the speaker.
Because I was expecting her to get up.
Exactly.
You've been nominated.
Exactly.
Lady, well, I could say nothing.
They, they, first of all, it's me. So, but just wanna make sure, I think, that we all.
Tell us what you wanna do about the bracelets and everything from the world.
Oh, yes, we are doing free, like, free ship style bracelets, the Wickedness Festival with our committee. It's a huge thing for the night of the Taylor Swift concert. They get bracelets, they switch them out, parade out with their friends and all that stuff, so we're doing that. And we are also doing special drinks for the night of the concert and stuff too. And we're also, we've been looking into some little, lot of things, a lot of things, and everything to make the whole entire concert a big experience for the ones that can't get to Taylor Swift in person. So.
Think that's everything? Um, we normally, we do our sponsorship.
Like $3,500?
$3,500 for Mountain Heritage every year.
I'm pretty sure, yeah. Is that it? Do you remember? Foundation, $3,500, is that what I'm on with?
She said $3,500, that they can't get from the shit in the hat? She said, last year she thought it was five.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was five. We can do our, if that'll be, if that will suffice.
Oh, I mean, yeah, we will have, we were very appreciative of these things that we get.
Okay.
Because we can't have the festival without our sponsorship.
Because I was thinking about that, I just wanted to make, make sure.
Yeah.
Because we try to keep it fair across the board, what we donate to one, we like to donate to, like this farmers market and everything.
Yes, of course.
So, council, if you will approve a $5,000 donation to the Mountain Heritage Festival Committee?
I'm like, motion.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right, thank you all so much.
You're welcome. Okay, Mountain Heritage Auto Show, Nick Sexton.
First of all, thank you all so much for having me again, and.
Forgive me for not having the face.
I wish you'd sent here with me. But yeah, thank you all for having me, and both of you, my homie, my man Nick Sexton. I work for Backroads of Appalachia. I also work for Lance Smith with the Subaru Car Company. And I actually drew up a tarmac rally for Harlan County that goes all the way from Harlan into Lechur, into our side of town now. And Lance Smith, which is, he's the godmother of that, basically, pretty much. He loved it. Him and Travis Pastrana and the American Rally Association are planning on running that next year. So that'll bring a lot of really cool things here. It'll be Car Martel, Ranin Simma, all the big names in rally right now. And I also am pushing to have Drift event in Lechur County, because I've been to Ford Hill, and that's the wildest stuff I've ever seen, and that's the most people I've ever seen come out. We had famous YouTubers come to Powell County. We had Adam LZ, he's got like 5 million subscribers on YouTube. Kylie Burton Mackey, he's got 3 or 4 million. He dropped a 69 foot satellite, drifted around with the, the athlete car, it's so cool. But for doing that, I'm wanting to have a, you know, rally hill climb right now. We have the SHTA Appalachian Hill Climb Series, and I'll, which we have one in Powell and one in Norton, but I would love to have one here, just because we have, you know, the road support. But Mr. Hubbard's kind of handed me more of the reins, so I'm more of on my own now, you know, coordinating events and such and what. But the reason I'm here today is to have my Mountain Heritage Auto Show again. My dad actually started it in 1981. I still got pictures and have them. And, but I'm gonna get me and Backroads and Summit, that are gonna provide trophies, we're gonna provide giveaways, we're gonna provide like backpacks and coolers from Summit Racing for kids that might not have a backpack or whatever, and color books, stickers. I'm gonna go around to a bunch of dollar stores and just stores around in general, and get some things to raffle off. But we will be paying for the, all the Summit Racing things and all the awards. The only thing is, if I could just get maybe like $200 to help finish paying for the music, that would be all with me. I, I'd pay on the, the best route I could go down for music. I've always wanted to have a concert at one of my shows, and especially with Mr. James here, that'd be awesome. But, but yeah, that would be perfect. But I would love to have it at the James Auto Park down here, too. It was a wonderful turnout last year, and I fully expected there to be double what there was last year. And I'm already started, I've already got six or seven vendors committed. I've got a sound guy, they said he could come and do the sound for an hour for a set, you know? And a bunch of people's already interested. I've got a bunch of people coming from Jackson, Lexington, so that'll be some outtowners coming as well. The Central Kentucky Mustang Association out of Morehead, they're gonna bring a group of about 30 mustangs down, so that'd be really cool. And it's a free for the community, anybody that wants to come, free community event, like always with us. All individuals are welcome. There'll be plenty of awards, and I'll have Mike there to be able to announce, you know, like the winners and stuff, and then I'll do raffles. I'm working on a t-shirt design, because I came up with a really cool design, but I'm trying to switch that out through Backroads real quick, but, yeah.
I love those t-shirts.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, but just, just permission to use the part for the show on the tour end. It's fun. And just like $200 to help pay for shoes, and then we can cover it.
Counsel?
Motion for both.
Okay, motion, motion for both? Go here a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Those opposed? I told him he'd gotten more if he brought the baby.
Yeah.
She's the cutest little lady, I swear.
I wish she was with him.
Okay, next, we have Craig.
Don't have a home up to report, and we'll decide that the watch around, I don't see we're gonna go bid.
He is stuck in handy.
Yeah.
He cannot leave his dock until, he said, "Call me until after midnight," as he called. Because he said, "Are you gonna get us there, big man?" And I said, "No." But I was in uniform.
Well, good. The only other thing I do wanna mention is that we were submitted to the crowd annual meeting, and of course, I just wanna shout out to Ms. Stacey Craig. She was the first to see events that were diligently spent at expanding her stadium infrastructure services, but also replacing, selling infrastructure, a recent sewer expansion project, and also for numerous flood victims to move into new homes. And once completed, Daniel Boone Hotel project will transform landscape of downtown Whitesboro and the economy and surrounding communities. So we wanted to thank Stacey Craig for.
Thank you, honored. It would've been honored to have received the award. It really was, I appreciate it.
You're the most wonderful, you really have.
Thank you.
But other than that?
Well, I'll let you, and to stay on that weight mark there, talk about the Corbin Award that we received. The $2 million to do the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes. I wish I was prepared.
Well, I didn't even spring that out. That was gonna be my mayor's report, but I thought, well, but we received the $2 million from Hal Rogers and the governor to review our wastewater treatment plant.
In the same way.
Yes. Yeah, Abana Mine Land Grant, and that was something that was, had been needed for several years. This will upgrade everything we have in our system.
And we are very excited for it.
Yeah.
We really are.
Yeah, something that's been a long time coming, and here it is. So we're very thankful for that. And Ms. Courtney?
Courtney.
Ms. Courtney, who, who wrote that grant for us.
Yeah.
And I spoke to the governor personally at that event, and he told us that, that grant submission was one that truly stood out to him. And so we thank Courtney for all of her hard work. She did a great job.
I hate to burn up your one, though, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was good finally to meet her, but, she's very nice, and she's, she did a wonderful job, and we appreciate her and all of you at Craig, we truly do.
Things we still were there helping.
We know that, we call you a lot.
So we come to them with us.
Yeah, we be blessed.
Well, and I, I speech there, before, and I told them, I said, "I feel like we're family at this point, because we, we communicate a lot. We have a lot of questions sometimes." Okay, thank you.
It's next, it's next, isn't it?
Why you said it seems to be signed, I guess it's the INI Phase 1 Project, first, the council, federal, and mayor signature, and it's the first invoice, but this would pay out of the funding that we get. No, we don't pay this out of our, you know.
Yeah, this won't come out of annual funding, this will be a, yeah.
Motion made.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Yes, and this will be the INI Phase 1 Project requisition certificate, $51,700. And should I, should I go ahead and read that? Does it require a reading?
I don't think so. It's pretty good. Okay, you just sign it, and I'll send it back.
Emergency management positions, Mr. Jordan Clinton.
Most of y'all know me, for those of y'all, my name's Jordan Clinton, police officer of the city. Been a police eight years, seven of them have been for the city. Kinda went down the rapid hole a few months ago, started looking into some stuff that some of these other cities have that we, that did don't, that might be beneficial to us. One of those, the biggest one, is a city emergency management director. Having that position allows you to communicate directly with Detective Sergeant Benjamin Frankford, and it takes some of the burden off that your county being director has to deal with. You all, everybody here is familiar with something on the fashion from 22 plus. I personally had to work through it and deal with the loss of my, my home. I'd like to talk to you in just a few minutes about possibly creating that position for the City of Whitesboro. I think it'd be a very beneficial position. They have copies of this.
Yeah.
If you look at it, it's streamlined some of the roles and responsibilities, the government I wanna get on is allow us to communicate directly with Frankford and getting those emergency declarations, state emergency declarations, streamline, we'll get them quicker. We'd have to send that to an county unit to have it pulled off, we could send it directly to Frankford, so allow us to get emergency funding and stuff quicker. Another one that's, I thought a lot about was, I was actually on the phone when it happened, but we lost cell phone service, TV, and internet access all at the same time. So we had no way to communicate with anybody and let people know what was going on. So I'd like to create a, sometimes a warning system in the city, whether that be weather sirens, or utilizing the siren on the roof here, and integrating some voice tones, whether that be like shelter in place tones or evacuation orders that can be integrated in some of the newer cruisers that allow voice tones. Just so, in case that ever occurs again, we have the ability to warn people, that way we can start getting people out quicker. Another good thing, and Paul has already talked to us, obviously, he works some stuff out with, but our nursing home is in a very low lying area, probably one below us in the city. So evacuating that would be pretty difficult. It's, it means a logistical nightmare, because you have, you have to be able to transport people that can walk, and then you have to transport people that are dead, so that's quarters, you know, vehicles, animals. So, you know, coordinating, having a plan, having those resources that you, you know, you can contact, you can bring that equipment in, you know, that situation, our county director to deal with it in the entire county. This would allow the city, take care of the city, give him a little less burden, be able to focus on other areas that are being hit for. able to focus on the other areas that are being hit for. It kind of makes life easier for, for both of us, incidents. But, I said, I put an example in there, some stuff, how you respond to them, just looking back on what we've done in 22. You know, we, we done great with what we had, but, you know, there's some things that we can always improve on. Something else too is, you know, the recovery side of it, we have a lot of people show up that wanted to help, they're already worked, and we didn't really have a good coordination where to send them, we didn't know where they needed to go, or we didn't know where they, we get people out, we didn't know where they were. That would allow us to coordinate with the county, if we got people showing up here, and we have people here, and we don't need them, we know where to send them to, or vice versa. But it seems like it would be, be a very favorable for us to have something else too that I threw in there, example, you know, it's not gonna be something that's, we're not dealing with those disasters thankfully on a semi, super regular basis. You would pre-plan, responsible to basically anything you can think of. Mass casualties, sensible situations, I know that myself, some other guys went to a school bus wreck. That, that constitutes a mass casualty incident. So, along that, you got, something happens in Mountain Heritage, you got a ride, something happens to a ride, you're gonna have a lot of people hurt, and just plans like that, who we're gonna contact, how we're gonna handle that situation, get it took care of, that we can help the people in this town, but something else like the recovery side of it, I know there's a lot of people along the county. If you have people that are unable to leave their homes and stuff like that, a lot of things is looked over as their medications, you know, somebody could be using some, heart meds, stuff like that. Something that we can do through that position was, you know, let them call this, this number, call somebody, we put them on a list, we'd be able to look at patients, if they can't get out again. It doesn't have to be super large scale, stuff like, for whatever it be. Kind of one of the things I put in there is go around the city, find stuff that I think needs fixed, or see a hazard, that's something that may be, you know, it's not, not an immediate danger, but something that can be worked on and fixed. Make a list every quarter, and submit that to the mayor, for her review, that we can, we can go about getting it fixed, get it took care of. You know, we have several large events and stuff that happen here in the city, we've got the Mountain Heritage Festival, we got October Fest, Fourth of July, Lebanon, stuff like that, so having some, having some plans already, already made for something, if something does happen during one of those events, you're not trying to figure it out, you're not trying to figure it out on the fly, having, if you gotta contact outside resources, whether that be EMS personnel, wastewater personnel, stuff like that, it makes, makes it a whole lot easier, you're able to get help, people a whole lot quicker.
And having someone here that we can communicate with directly.
Yeah, having somebody here, so we're not having to call someone else that has to call somebody.
Yeah. That's like us trying to call Paul, and you know, he's, everybody's trying to rely on him.
Yeah.
And no one can get a hold of us.
Yeah.
When it's here, and we all know, we have a plan on, okay, if this happens, this is where we're gonna meet, and...
It takes a little bit of the burden off of him, and it allows us to better, better respond to situations.
It's like when we had the last flood, and remember, we had to do the declare, instead of emergency, we had to wait on him to send it to us, to sign it, and we could do one of our own. Go ahead and get that to Frankfurt.
We could send it directly to Frankfurt without having to go through him, and that way it speeds up the process.
Is it full-time position, or is it gonna be a part-time?
It's gonna be a part-time. Like I said, you know, certain times, you know, if there's something happens, it'd be probably a call, but it wouldn't really be full-time. One thing I have noticed is there's a lot of grants right now for improvements to infrastructure in response to natural disasters. But currently, if we wanted to apply for those, we'd have to take that to Paul, and Paul would have to apply for it more than half, and this will allow us to apply directly for that stuff. And there's probably money out there for some, for some equipment, and I think the biggest one I seen was technology, technology based response to natural disasters.
And with a town that has already been through one, where more am I supposed to be?
Yeah, it's a possibility. We were fortunate in February, we didn't get the amount of water that Hot County, Floyd County Johnson got, but it still done damage to us, we're still recovering from that, there's still some stuff that we've, like the railways and stuff, that are damaged from 22. But, you know, I'd like to see this created that way, if it ever does happen again, we're a lot more prepared to respond to it, and be able to get the work done and get people took care of quicker.
And creating an evacuation plan, that's like, in February, we were worried about, at what point do we tell people to start evacuating?
Yeah.
But it didn't get to that point, thank God, but, you know, we, we thought, that that was one of the key factors that wanted us to get on this, was when do we start evacuating people?
Now, it's something, and one thing that you can do with that is, you know, along the waterways, you can, I would, the easiest way to do it is just pick a point on it, and once it hits that, that point, you know, it may not go two more inches, it may go a little 20 feet, but once it hits that specific trigger point, go ahead and start working with the people out.
Yeah. And this last one, we've noticed that at eight feet, that's when we start to work.
Yeah, so.
It doesn't, just play the kitchen, what we say is already...
Yeah, there's, there's a few, you know, I lived for about a year before I come back. This place feels like home to me. Started here in 2017, didn't know very many people at all, now I know majority of the residents on a first name basis, you know, it just, it feels like home here, I care about the community here, I like to...
There are a lot of other communities, cities and counties that have started having these optimization issues. Part-time, full-time, they have their communication, they'll take the emergency management, and bring the records.
Yeah, we had discussed like, you know, having one from the police department, one from the fire department, so have like each other, something did happen, and they were to, you know, figure it out together. So we, we need two petitions, really.
Yeah, one from police.
Add it on, you know, I think that would be good, it has to, just like we have each other, if something's going on, we fall upon each other.
Yeah, I've done it both, I've been a police officer eight years, I've volunteered firefighters since 2013, so having, seeing both sides of it, you know, they're, they're gonna handle stuff, respond to that differently, the law enforcement side, but it would be beneficial to have somebody from both backgrounds.
We also have Kaila, that's the, what is her name?
Swift Water.
Swift Water Emergency. And, is there anything you like to bring? Yeah, people would be proud of it, and Rick would get all that stuff.
As far as I know, Kaila's a homeowner, certified as well as a lawyer.
And he's an instructor now, he's got that also, you know, they don't, he's great on himself, but he did...
Yeah, he's actually teaching current.
Wow, I didn't know that. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to create the two positions for the emergency management director here, and...
Motion made and seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, and next, I'd like to entertain a motion to allow Jordan to be our emergency management, one of our emergency management directors. Motion made and seconded, and all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? And we'll, we'll choose the other guy.
Thank you.
At the later date.
Here's your mate.
Yeah, here's your mate. Okay, next up is the mayor's report. Mountain Heritage Festival is coming up, White Spur Days on September 24th, on Wednesday, what time, 10?
9:00 to 2:00.
9:00 to 2:00, okay. The Downtown White Spur, that's always a great event, and when you were talking about the weather, the rain's never stopped me from getting a bloody headache. It has never stopped me. And then the parade on September 27th, opening ceremony's at 10:30, parade at 11:00. And our grand marshal, Miss Connie Teal, and that was a great choice, Connie, I know everybody has seen Connie's wonderful pictures that she posts, she is the, the county photographer, I call her, and she's always been great. And again, I'm proud to announce that we've gotten our $2 million for our wastewater treatment plant, and we can't wait to get started on that. That is not only investment in funding, this is an investment for our community and the people in this community who deserve it, who deserve the best of, and quality of everything, and that has been my number one priority, is to see that we, we get what we need and what we deserve here. And it's been a long time coming, so I appreciate everybody who had a hand in that. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to add? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor.
Bye, Jason.
Bye, Jason.